Alright everyone, welcome to the public forum in advance of our October 5th town meeting. And this is also a posted select board meeting, so after our public forum this evening, if you want to stay, we welcome you to stay for what we hope to be a relatively brief and a select board meeting, but we will be continuing with our session. So first of all, we just wanted to welcome everyone to this review of our warrant. We appreciate for the folks who are here and anybody who's at home watching, you're taking the time to make sure that you have a full understanding of the warrant articles to be presented at the October 5th Fall Town Meeting. Just as a reminder, that will be held here at Hopkins Academy, starting at 7:00 next Thursday night. We always like to start with a thank you to the municipal employees, the volunteers, and the school personnel, and also Havy Media, who helped make all of these types of special events possible. So, thank you for everyone's hard work in putting this together. Before we get into the specific articles of the forum, we just wanted to give you a little bit of a preview, and again, we're always trying to bring people forward from where they last left off in conversation. So, most of you are aware of the fact that we did have another special town meeting towards the end of August, and at that meeting, we were very much focused on particular building articles and a land purchase. And a couple of those articles are moving forward to a November 14th ballot. So again, encouraging everyone to put November 14th on your calendar, because you will have the opportunity to be voting on the possibility of a new library, a new senior center, and then some other capital items that may arise from the October 5th meeting. The other thing we wanted to point out was that there has been a tremendous amount of work being done, not only by the Select Board and the Finance Committee, but certainly also many of the staff in town, trying to get ready for this Fall Town Meeting. As you're aware, we've been very vocal about our commitment to providing for public safety. And we've also been vocal about the fact that unfortunately, the pace of revenue growth in Havy has not kept up as much as we would like with the pace of the need for additional operating expense. So with that in mind, we have been having conversations, for those of you who've been paying attention to some of these Finance Committee and Select Board meetings, about the possibility of even introducing an override to fund some fire department personnel as early as this fall. What we want you to know is that that type of an option will not be on the October 5th meeting. We've made a conscious decision not to go down that path right now. First and foremost, because we recognize that any sort of ask on our part to the town really needs to be encumbered with a tremendous amount of due diligence on our part. And there have been some moving parts, and again, I'm really happy to say that the Finance Committee and Select Board are working very cooperatively on this effort, but as you would not be surprised, there are differences of opinion on how to approach this. So, we want to make sure that we fully vet not only all of the current delivery mechanisms and related expenses we have in place or services being offered now, but also evaluate the need for additional services that we are unable to fund going forward. So, we will be doing an awful lot of work starting on October 6th, just so you don't think that we're taking too much of a break here. And again, the intent will be to address the fact that with the Proposition 2.5 rules, that our revenue does not currently look like it's going to be able to keep pace with expenses. So, as we've said before, the only options are you reduce your expenses, you increase your revenues, or some combination thereof. So, much more to come on that front. The other thing is that we've also had some moving parts in terms of free cash and some other numbers, and we really need the time to get our minds wrapped around it before we bring any sort of formal recommendation to the town. So, after October 5th, feel free to continue to watch the Select Board and Finance Committee meetings, because there's more to come. So, with that said, we'd like to roll forward with the public forum. And just a reminder of kind of the rules of engagement here, our intention in presenting the forum is to provide voters with an overview and context for our special town meeting. We want to improve your understanding of individual warrant articles, and we want to offer you the opportunity to ask questions tonight. What the forum is not intended to do is take any vote favorable or unfavorable, provide any group or individual the opportunity to advocate for a particular article, or to speak against a particular article, and please refer to the public forum handout for any rules and procedures for more clarification. So, the bottom line is, this is not a replacement for this special town meeting, and we have to be very careful to make it such. It's an information session only. Okay? So, with that said, I think we'll roll right into Article 1, and I believe the Finance Committee is speaking to Article 1 this evening.
Alright, well, good evening. So first off, and most importantly, we have been able to increase the fire department staff by three full-time positions inside our current budget, which we're very pleased to be able to have done. Town safety is paramount to our mission. So basically, Article 1 is to clean out any budgetary items that have changed since the last town meeting. And so, we've been able to move some things around, we have been able to keep within Prop 2.5, so we're, like Molly said, we're not coming for an override this particular town meeting. And that was all done by moving around free cash and from changing some budgets around to meet those requirements. We are also happy to say that we are keeping up with our OPEB requirements, so we're still saving money for OPEB. And one of the ways we've been able to bring back some of that money, so we were able to fund the fire departments by, you know, starting at home. We've reduced the stipends, paid to part-time elected officials to free up some money for the fire department. And we've also been able, also happy to say, we've been able to provide a 1.5% COLA increase to our non-직원 employees, so...
I think it would be useful for the audience to know what OPEB is.
Ah, well, the exact what OPEB actually stands for, I'm gonna ask the Treasurer if he can come and tell us that.
Other post-employment benefits, so in the health insurance benefits, the portion that the town pays health insurance to our retired employees after they have left our employ.
Right, and so, since you don't actually know what that is going into the future, you have to have a savings for it.
It's an actuarial calculation based on the number of people, male, female, how long they're expected to live and all that. We get a figure that's provided to us, but our unsecured liability is, it's like an audit, you receive a report from our actuary every year, just specifically this kind of an audit, and usually you want to find the liability, because this is the amount that you should be contributing to it each year. And though we're short of the amount that we should, we're really doing very, we're doing very well, and we have a plan we're sticking to, and that's what's, that's what's on the present company, is very important.
And Havy's doing better at this department than most towns?
Than any, than any county.
So, alright, so that's basically Article 1.
Just a little bit more clarification, okay? There's approximately $36 billion in Massachusetts that's unfunded because of the liability with the insurance. Havy has some...
About 6.5 million, and we do have about a million in the trust fund now. But the reason we want to fund this is because it helps protect our bond rating, which is AA+. And we don't want to see that going down, especially if we've got new buildings coming on, and we're going to be borrowing a significant amount of money. We want to continue to protect that high rating that we have.
If there aren't any further questions on Article 1, then the next article is Article 2. And, that's a consent agenda? Is that, are you speaking for that?
On each warrant, we have a number of articles which we think, and it's up to you to affirm that thinking, that are non-controversial, are routine in nature, and don't require debate. And so, we can take all these articles on the consent agenda and just take one vote rather than as many votes as there are articles, with saving a little bit of procedural time, and gets us to the articles that are interesting, worthy of debate, and of consequence. Yes, sir?
Steve, I'm going with one question.
I see we're transferring funds back to the CPA fund, the additional articles we are producing substantially on CPA funds, the athletic fields. Transfer money in both the balance being CPA account after this, and the other?
Right now, before we take these votes, the balance of the CPA is roughly $2.1 million. There's an additional money, set of money that I believe is coming in November, something in the order of $1,300,000. So, if you take all of these spending articles and prove that, you'll still have a balance of well over a million dollars in CPA. So, the first consent agenda item is a housekeeping article. And every year, the Treasurer and I sit down and we look at all the old articles where people have approved spending on a particular project, the project is completed, and there may or may not be some balances left over in those old articles. And so, what we do, so we sweep that money back to the original pot that it came from. It's from a free cash pot that goes back to free cash. So those balances go back to the original funding source. The other thing that we do is we take a look at the debt that we've incurred, and if the project is to borrow for, and we have expended all of the money that we are going to expend on this project, and there's an excess of debt authorization, that clutters up our books, and we use this opportunity to clean that up. So, this article has no impact upon taxes, and it just cleans up the whole accounting for the town. Article 3 is, again, a housekeeping article. We already passed Article 3 at the annual town meeting. Every year, we have to approve revolving funds for various purposes. The Department of Revenue has come out with a new mandate that this be codified as a bylaw rather than as an annual vote. So, this is just compliance with the requirements of the Department of Revenue. And again, there's no impact upon taxes for this particular article. Article 8, why don't we stick with Article 8? Again, this is on the consent agenda. It creates a Veterans Tax Workoff Program for any qualifying Havy resident veteran who may need some help with their taxes, and in exchange for labor for the town, they could get a reduction on their real estate taxes. And we have a Senior Tax Workoff Program, which we are going to be implementing in the next couple of weeks. So this would be a companion piece to that Senior Tax Workoff Program, but only for vets. Looks like a couple of questions, yes?
Qualifying Havy members is what?
I'm sorry, can't...
How are qualifying Havy members defined?
They have income limits that have to be met, they have to be resident in their own houses, and I think that's about it.
Anyone who's served is eligible?
Anybody who's a owner of a residential property who has income limits that qualify can take part in this program. And if they're disabled, then they can designate somebody else to do the work for them.
I was speaking to some people today about the Senior Tax right off, and they would like to have the actual numbers that you'd like me to plug in when you need from the department.
Okay, we'll make a greater effort. I know that Suzanne's been away, and I've been waiting for her to come back for us, pull that program out more aggressively. I think I saw another handle? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Article 4 is to town to vote to transfer from free cash $53,402 into the capital stabilization account, or take any action thereof. And this is just to help with the next article, which is for capital stabilization, and I'll let Jerry speak to that one.
Thanks very much, Joyce, and thanks everybody for joining us this evening. Article 5 outlines some capital projects which will be requesting the citizens of town in Havy to support this year. There's vehicle equipment for the DPW, the Police Department and Fire Department, there's infrastructure improvements for our sewer department, there's improvement for our public safety complex and DPW garage, and a state mandated sewer and water rate study. Specifically, on Article number 5, we're going to be looking for a SCADA system for the sewer in DPW. Public safety complex, the salad court's going to have some improvements where requested. There's a cruiser requested for Chief Mason, there's handheld, not specifically for him, sorry, I apologize for that. You have a parade car now, but it's for the police department and Chief Mason's men and ladies. There's handheld radar units, which are old and we like, people like to replace. There's some training, equipment, parts, and ammunition. There's administrative vehicle for the fire department, there's an F-500 truck for the DPW. The vehicle lift down at the highway garage needs some improvements made for it to be able to handle the weight of the vehicle, and we're asking it to actually pick up. And then there's a rate study for the capital plan, which is mandated by the state, and we need to take care of that, and this article will be taking care of those by this forum.
Article 6 amends the restriction placed on money that requires that the town build a fire substation only on the North Havy Village Ball Field. The amendment allows the money to be spent for a sub-fire station on any town-owned
This is Article 7, Hampshire Council of Government withdrawing from Hampshire Council of Government. As you know, we're going to put this article on in the August town meeting, but we failed to give them 45-day notification by two days, so we couldn't do it. It's all done properly this end. There's been a great deal of changes in the council. As you know before, now we don't have courts under the thing at state control, the county correction is gone, it's a state jail, probate is gone, most of their duties, they don't do anymore. We'd still be able to belong and still take care of all of the things that they offer, even if we're not a town member. The biggest problem there is, they have to come up with $600,000 of revenue every year, and they don't have a source, like a town or city. You can raise your revenue through taxation. The Council of Government doesn't have that avenue to raise funds. They have to do it by providing programs through a fee basis. We just completed our audit, and the audit said they don't know how the cog can continue to exist. They're predicting $300,000 shortfall. Years ago, we had the same problem when we owned the critical care and nursing home. We ended up selling that so we could continue to pay outstanding bills. We're facing the same thing, we just, we're going to sell Hampshire Power. We originally had four bids, three cooled out immediately, one stayed, and we tried to make an offer, and they never did. So the value of Hampshire Power isn't what we thought it was, and there's a possibility with Hampshire Power, it's so volatile, that electric business, plus we're up against the big boys like Constellation, Nationwide, and things of that, so it's very difficult to raise the revenue. I guess some of the other things that were very disturbing, when you have a $300,000 deficit, last year, the executive director took a $25,000 bonus, this year, he took a $15,000 bonus. Every member of the cog that works there took bonuses of $1,000 to $2,000, and they're showing a negative basis. They just hired a lady that worked in the White House to polish up the council's image, supposedly for $15,000, too. So they're trying to change their image, but in the meantime, things aren't working, the antics are the same, there's political infighting in there, they asked the Hampshire Trust to leave, they pay revenues to the cog $57,000 a year for services of using the courthouse, and politically, they asked them to leave, I understand. So these are some of the reasons why we're asking to pull out, they don't have the revenues. And Mr. Sarzinski was a council member for 11 years, and Mike was a very smart fellow, graduated from Amherst, the Wharton School of Business. He's so loyal, though, he never could figure out their budgeting process, and he resigned in frustration. I've had experience, I was on their council, I was selecting before, I represented Belcher Town, and I feel the same way. We don't get the exact figures, everything is polished over, so we think it's in our best interest at this time to consider pulling out, like North Hampton, East Hampton, where they can, just to mention the other ones that don't belong.
The remaining articles on the warrant for October 5th are CPA-related articles. So Article 9 is placed on here by the CPA Committee, and it is asking to raise $190,000 for the final restoration of Chucker Park, located at the intersection of Brick and Ridge and Huntington Road. Private funds are also being raised for this cause, and I believe that the CPA Committee has approved to move in forward with this. Article 10, CPA Committee is providing $35,000 for a pavilion near the elementary school playground. Again, private funds, I believe are being raised by the PTO in support of this effort. I believe that they also drew, notice I'm asking Amy, because she's on the CPA. And then Article 11 is providing $400,000 for the Hopkins Academy Athletic Fields. And just to bring everybody back, and I don't think I can remember which year this actually was, but for over a decade, the Hopkins Academy trustees worked diligently with area landowners to try to effect some land swaps back here. And several years ago, they finally had a roughly seven acre parcel of contiguous land adjacent to the school, and for, I believe, $205,000, was that right? Two town, town meeting voted to approve overwhelmingly the purchase of that land on the part of the town. So the land, of course, is rarely under the purview of the Hopkins Academy schools, and it recognizes it takes a fair amount of effort to bring that raw land, if you will, into use for reconfiguration of the much-needed athletic fields here. So, after, again, an awful lot of effort by Field Development Committee, the School Committee over the years, CPA Committee, trying to figure out the right language, I believe that the committee voted to move forward again, and recommended town meeting that they approve the expenditure of $400,000 as a necessary first step, again, with other additional funds being raised by the school department, and I believe also an ask for some donation of manual labor and effort as part of all of this. So, a tremendous community-oriented project that will finally make use, as that seven acres is considered for a moment. So that is Article... Any questions on the CPA articles? And if not, that will be the warrant next Thursday. So, Donald is asking to make a brief statement about the omnibus budget.
I'm not telling you which way to vote, one way or the other, but I want to bring out a point of interest, and I did vote against this process, but I suggested this process a month and a half ago, and the reasoning well, why, I think that you go before the voters anything when it comes, but it's going to jeopardize the two buildings and 2019 budget. The thing I'm a little disturbed about is, we're only funding these fire department positions for six months, which most people don't know, they think it's a full year. But when it comes to the 2019 budget, they're going to be in the thick of it with school teachers, with highway personnel, and themselves, and 2019 is going to be a very difficult year. The way I'm looking at it, we're budgeting in 2018. All we see was a tip of the iceberg. We thought we were going to come close to $500,000 for revenues, we needed $800,000. We made a contingency budget possibly that we were going to do for $270,000, which we included an override, but this is the best scenario to get us through and have a balanced budget for 2018, so we can begin to pay our bills and fenders for the rest of the year. Then the Finance Committee is going to really dig down on 2019, because that's when the whole iceberg comes out of the water in 2019, and we're really going to have to work to balance the budget in 2019.
Okay, just a little bit of friendly repub... We haven't put together the 2019 budget yet, and again, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we mentioned that the Finance Committee and the Select Board are working very hard together to evaluate not only the expenditure side of it, but also the revenue side of things. So, to Donald's point, we've been quite conscious of the fact that, as I stated earlier, our revenues are not keeping the case with an enhancement of the operating needs of the town. Previously, we've talked not only about public safety, we've also talked about investments in information technology, the lack of a human resource function here at Town Hall, you know, and some other initiatives. But again, we, there are many ways to skin that cat, so before we cry uncle, a lot more work to be done, and you'll be hearing much more about that, again, once we have actual numbers in front of us, and not just a, our own personal assessment of what those numbers might look like. So, we'll be talking, likely having another public forum, again, after we get through October. The Select Board is committed to having a public forum as part of that budget process. I don't think we've yet agreed on when that forum will take place, but we are committed to having a public forum and garnering some input from the taxpayers and voters and residents of the town to help inform us as to what direction we really need to be heading in terms of service delivery. So, more to come on that. Any further questions, Tris? You want to make comment?
I think you should just share with them that numbers could possibly change before next week, we did town meeting.
Yes.
I think that's important, to put that out there right now.
Sure, yeah, earlier, I think when giving a little preamble, I mentioned that there were some, some numbers that were moving. One of those numbers has to do with free cash, because we're moving into the Fall Town meeting, we're always cognizant of what we have available for free cash, and there's a recent adjustment that the accountant made us aware of. And again, we don't have it wrapped around that we're always looking at when there is free cash, how much is one time versus how much might be generated from normal operations, and that helps us make recommendations as to how to expend that. So, between now and next Thursday, the Select Board and Finance Committee are going to have... have a little bit of further discussion along with the financial management team to decide whether or not we need to potentially alter how we're handling a couple of these capital items and the like. So more to come on that. I'm going to apologize if we can't tell you the details tonight, but we really just found out about it. It's a very dynamic process, this budgeting and town meeting. Okay, so Joyce is that?
I think just saying that the state has their hand in it also. So it's always a moving target and there are some things that happened last year that are just coming to light this year. And I think that's where we're, woke up meeting next Wednesday to finalize things, but I think that, you know, the state is going to move.
Right. So again, we're talking about, I'm going to refer to probably some tweaks in the article language, but at a macro level, everything that you've heard tonight will stand for the October 5th meeting. So are any closing questions for the public forum? Otherwise, we are going to be moving into our regular scheduled select board meeting and I think we only have really a consent agenda and this should be fairly short if anybody really doesn't want to go home and you want to hang around here. We're happy to have you. Okay. So Pat, I think that closes the forum. So thank you for those who came out tonight. Extremely appreciate it. Thank you. Okay? All right, so we're opening the select board meeting for Wednesday, September 27th. I should say continued public forum into the select board meeting. The first item of business is a consent agenda. For the consent agenda, we have approval for minutes of August 9th, 16th and 23rd. We have three marks, accounts payables 1812, 1812-2, and then payroll 1812. We have a request for a one day liquor license, top of the campus Mullins Center for hockey games to be held on October 14th, 20th, 21st, 27th, and then again on November 4th, 9th, 25th and December 1st. We have a one day liquor license for the top of the campus Mullins Center, the self account course reception area for October 26th. We have a Hadley Housing Authority appointment request for Kristin Zerzinski. Excuse me, Zerzinski. We have a change order for the clarifier project submitted by the DPW. We have the resignation of a full-time officer, Daniel Fernandez, and a request for an appointment of a full-time officer, Joel Kupian. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe you're probably going to want to speak to that, Chief?
If you want to hear me.
Okay, let me just finish reading, absolutely. And then we also have the request for the Hopkins Academy cross-country team to hold a road race on the Town Common. Very nice use of our Town Common. Oh, sorry, that's my personal opinion.
So who?
Second.
Okay, so the second, all in favor?
Aye, in the session.
Aye, and the second, all in favor? Okay.
Could we have Chief, our DPW director explain what people don't even want to clarify this?
Sure, can we do the police first?
Sure.
Okay, so Chief, would you and anybody else like to come up? And then Marla, are you still there? Oh, there's one, sorry, I didn't see. And then afterwards, maybe you can just explain what's on the clarify list.
So I'll be brief, I know it's awfully boring. Probably recognize Joel Kupian. He has been a special officer less than February when he appointed him. Joel comes to us with significant experience. He has been a police officer in San Diego. He was also a deputy sheriff in Maine and currently works for GCC Public Safety. He also served as a criminal investigator for the Terry Downs Office for a short period of time. Possibly the most important thing about Joel is that over the last several months, he has been in my office several times wondering if there was any full-time positions opening up in his actual term now, other job opportunities so that he could work for Hadley, not just particularly Police Department. He went through our last hiring process and was actually our second choice. He hired the last gentleman on our last appointment and I would recommend Joel to be replacing for Officer Danny's in the full-time ranks.
That's definitely.
He has the full-time account, so he is a free hire.
Yeah. I'll vote for that.
Motion, who's got it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for today.
It's good, it's good.
Yes.
Marla, can you, and I'm going to emphasize a word here, briefly, briefly describe whatever I...
Describe the clarifier project and its change.
Yes, a change order, what a clarifier is, what we call what a clarifier is and what it's for.
So what's it been here?
Wow, they just, they're...
If I can correct me if I mess up this part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Clarifier, it's a basically, it's a mechanical means to remove solids from the sewer system with the solid break delay. The clarifier project was a project that began two years ago, I believe, in that the town meeting pushed additional funds, the projects that belonged to the clarifiers. First clarifier was downloaded, we came across an electrical issue that has nothing to do with the clarifier project itself, so it's a separate issue. It was discovered that we, the wiring's 30 plus years old, both clarifiers open up waste water, create low plant power. We were supposed to replace all that wiring since we were building clarifiers. The second change order on the painting is something that was in the second all time in the mid-process, so it wasn't included with everything, the outer mirror plates. And again, that's something we should have ground out for bolts and painted over the exposed concrete. So those are two separate change orders.
All right, thank you, Marla.
Motion's been moved, second.
Chair?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then I think David, are there any highlights we need to know about? And then the other thing is we just need to talk about scheduling.
So just touching on the highlights.
What's the Maybrook Bridge that you have?
Maybrook Bridge is pretty much a punchless plan at this point. Mark O'Leary was talking about it. Looks like all the fire grass has been quite repiled and it's a catch basin reconstruction or building, I guess. But they should be down to punchless at this point. The Maybrook Village, Village Hall, or Maybrook Village is nearing completion. Looks like there's a small delay, the final safety inspection should be occurring in May or September. It's a plan to be done in September, September. Sewer pump station, the workers start, pump station one in Brickburg is going to start next week. Still waiting for those things posted. Gas moratorium update, so we provided testimony to the local area legislature about obstacles to local economic development, considering tax on gas power. Asked them for some sort of relief on that. They also are providing comments about short-term solutions to mass development. They have a report which is over right now, comments about the gas power requirement. So Turka Park reconstruction phase two is pretty much complete except for two punchless items. Phase three will start, should vote as approved. Marla, we started a sewer line inflow and infiltration project, smoke testing on major portions of the sewer pipeline. Southern Street and from the intersection of Route 9, West and Middle Street, West and Hill Valley, smoke testing and reveal the direct connections to the sewer system. We're about to start monitoring the sewer system capacity and treating. And as we all know, most expensive water to treat is clean water. So every gallon, you can have clean water in this collection system, it's a government tree that will spend money. Smoke testing, needs checking the sewer line, smoke, seeing if it comes out. Sometimes people are surfacely concerned that they may get some smoke in the lungs. Want to make sure that everybody understands that smoke is non-toxic, leaves no residue and does not create a fire hazard. We're starting to work on October 10th.
Where did it post in the table?
Seven. We have a posting, Marla, for that, the letters to everybody.
Yes, all residents in the smoke... Copy made available. Let them know the details of what to expect or not to expect.
So is that the paper?
Public Board's meeting next Thursday. Council and AG has a right to instill tombs on October 2nd, October 14th. We have the North Halle Sugar Shack protest. We also have an art event on Common on October 14th. Five K for farmland on October 15th. Rabies Clinic down at the DPW for anybody who's got a cat or a dog that needs to be neglected, October 21st. And then the special town election on November 14th.
Did I ask you to update on Pride? I know we had a CC assist on the Pride station and I saw some work again and I saw more come through Screech Mall again. Where are we with Pride? So the CC work, stop work order is still in effect. Pride still needs to provide for us the basic minimum for plans for the DPW, for the building inspector, for conservation, for the fire department. They have not produced those plans and so we have shut down that project site until they have come into the minimum compliance that the town requires.
Selectman Pecheski said to me yesterday that he thinks it may be in our best interest for the interest of the town and we possibly request that Pride come before us. Let's point this out, all this information out with all the players at the table in way to our meeting and see if we can, you know, help solve, resolve this problem. We would like to support business in this town, I know that, but I also know that Pride has not complied with the basics that they told us they were going to do. I don't think that that should be allowed. I absolutely agree with CC assist, but let's get them in and see what we can do. It'd be my opinion if we could try to bring them in and get those issues resolved once and for all and get that straightened out.
Well, and to that point, we also had a split vote on the licensing arrangement, as I recall, and it was the people who voted in favor of that, if I remember correctly, were quite keen on making sure that they were fully compliant on all other aspects of the project in order to proceed with their licenses. So, I mean, for that reason...
I was one, I'd like to bring them in. Conservation, DPW and fire, all come into an agreement, then I am absolutely willing to change my vote on this marijuana license. At this point, it clearly lies in your...
And to Chair's point, give him a chance. You know, because we do want to be business friendly, but we need to be safe and sound to everybody.
Donald, did I, did I?
Yes, you know, my intent, Jerry, was, you know, we're being shown in a negative thing like we're not progressives. We are very progressives in this town, but you have to follow the rules and they don't follow the rules. And so they have to be explained, you know, by our building inspector and everyone else and conservation commission. I guess that's basically the lead element that stopped it, right? But there's other things and I think it would better that everybody else that would come before the board and knowing, you know, they have to adhere to all our rules and regulations.
So David, can we put that on the to-do list to get...
Yes, so Tim has been in contact with the towers and the departments that are affected and so he is coordinating this. We are observing this. Liquor license comes up with renewal in November and if we don't have compliance by then, certainly I know with my recommendation about the renewal of the liquor license, we're...
I just have one more question. On here, David, you said we have possibly a date with DOT to talk about the widening of Route 9 again in '21? Do we actually have a date for them to come in or not?
We don't have a date right now.
But we're working on one at a presentation?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the only thing I had before we get to, I think everyone just had their announcements of the like, was just to talk about scheduling. So right now, obviously, we have the October 5th meeting and we always meet at 6 o'clock as opposed to meeting immediately prior to town meeting. But I guess I would ask the pleasure of the board, we do have some things to discuss with the finance committee because of some of the moving targets we were talking about. Would people, theoretically, we can stay tonight, although I'm not sure that would be extremely productive. How do people feel about hosting a meeting for October 4th, 5th, 6th?
How do you feel?
Everybody okay? All right. Finance committee, you guys good with that too?
October 4th.
It's next Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with October 4th.
Okay. All right, so, yes.
7 o'clock, fine?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock start.
I could hear you guys on this side.
7 o'clock, okay.
Wait a minute, is that a rhetorical question or...
Yeah, great. What did you mean by here? So now that we have that resolved, does anybody have anything else they need to cover tonight? Any announcements?
This Sunday at 5 o'clock over at Echelon, the Fragile X Foundation chair, Denise Devine, will be hosting a wine tasting. Tickets are available through Mrs. Devine's, code 413-5866. 5841859. And if anybody hasn't bought tickets yet, they're $30. And we always thank the town of Hadley for all their support through the school systems and through everything else that Fragile X has benefited from, from the town of Hadley. We really appreciate it.
If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good night, everybody.